The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
We have reformed the agenda. Any additions or corrections? Motion to approve. Open by Moore.
I'll second.
Second by Rick. To approve the agenda as a committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion nay. Motion carried. We have minutes for seven twenty-seven. Are there additions or corrections to that?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Jerry.
I'll second.
Second by Rick. So is it in favor of approving the minutes of seven twenty-seven? Say aye.
Aye.
Motion nay. Motion carried. Do we have any comments from the comments? From the lizard who's this morning, it's not on the agenda. Here comes the press. All right, let's move along. Jenna, I think we've got you. First thing this morning about some tax letters.
I think we need the first one. Hopefully the second I also come, he said he would, but hopefully.
Yeah, we better wait eight forty-five for him.
Is that the first one?
Okay. This individual sent a letter requesting assignment of two county held tax sale certificates. Apparently has the intention to resell them. According to the letter, he's asking for abatement of the taxes. But I don't think that's out. One parcel has taxes of a hundred and thirty-two dollars eighty-eight cents. And the other one is two hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty-three cents. Need your decision on what you want to do with the assignments, I guess, first, and then with the taxes.
Please request an assignment of...
The two certificates, yeah.
We have to do that and decide on...
So his, in this case, Jenna, his intent is to purchase the, or to get control of these lots. And he's going to resell them. So he's not really taking them over and going to develop them or do anything with themself.
That's what the letter said.
And I believe our involvement in the past has been that we would forgive the interest on it. Somebody wants to pay the taxes and see where it goes.
That's what I told him when he sent me the, all I had is email conversations with him.
Okay.
Haven't spoken to him.
That being said, I would be able, I would be willing to make a motion to forgive the interest on those two properties, but not for the taxes. One would be for, what, thirty-one dollars?
Fifty, yeah.
I'll make a motion at that effect, thirty-one dollars and the fifty dollars interest on the second piece. If he's willing, if he's willing to bring up the taxes. I mean, I will just forgive him, then he waits and decides not to, or whatever, we're going to do here, so. Aye.
And the assignment of certificates.
Yep, that's what's fair.
We forgive him the thirty-one and the fifty.
Correct, and that's all.
Yeah. I'll second that. Jerry, we have a second to forgive the interest and make an assignment, but not forgive the payment of tax. Any others to say? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion nay. Motion carried. I expect we better wait eight forty-five.
Yeah, we just, um...
We've got a couple of things down here. We need to do any drains for those.
Yeah, I think we can do those. There's not, not that we're going to have an engineer for it, we'll just have Trish come in.
We'll go down and do our reports and...
We'll do that, too.
Maybe be close to...
Get a little closer.
Jerry, you want to start out with your report?
Sure. I had one meeting last week, Peggy. And it was my CFR meeting on July thirty at six P.M. Went over various items that, I guess, the most interesting for the board would be the year-end report for CFR, which we ended up with five point four million dollar revenue. Our budget was right at five point three. We ended up with expenses of four point five. The budget was four point nine. We were estimating a budget of four hundred and thirty-eight thousand profit. And we ended up at nine hundred and eleven thousand, almost a million dollars. Never been that close to a million before. Um, that being said, that left us with a working capital of about one point nine million. We were paid off over five hundred thousand dollars during the year to the Richmond Center in Ames. So that building was paid for. They're talking about purchasing the property in Port Dodge, out there by the airport. And they're going to have some drafts from Woodwork, Woodwork, is that how you say it, Woodwork? Construction on next month that will show their ideas. One of them is to completely tear down the building there because it's got, Rick, you, what do you, they got that building out there that we rent and were thinking about buying. It's got porous brick on the outside.
Oh.
And there's a lot of concern. When you go into that building, you can, when they first took it over, you could see the black mold stuff that they cleaned up. And it always has that damp smell to it. So Woodwork's a little concerned about building around it and utilizing it. And it's so hard to get property, and property's so expensive in the primaries, and you've got to get zoning for the, for the CFR.
About four or five acres right here?
Well, they've only got two. If they can buy a little bit more from the farmer next to them, I think that might be a viable option, so. All that being said, they had a pretty good year. Michelle went through her goals for the year, which ones were retained. She set new ones for next year. I was just telling Carl earlier since two and a half, three years ago, when all these changed, we made all these changes. We've got about five new board members now in there, and they're all very engaging people. And it's been a good changeover, good mixing of people on the board, so. I guess that's all I have.
All right. I actually didn't have any scheduled meetings last week. I did Monday after our meeting here at the courthouse. I went out and visited with Paul. And he brought me up to date on the history of our closed landfill. He's on that landfill board now, so I kind of got up to date on that. Then I went down to the LEC and visited with Steve Cook on some, what their steps were they're going through. They are going to put a, a new fence around the enclosure to keep people out of the, away from the tower, things like that. So that's going to be going up here shortly. And then, the weekend, I took a tour of our new drains district there northeast of Gilmore. And drove that, drove out there in the field and seen how they were coming. It's looking like they're doing a nice job. Checked out the tile. They're all rolled out and lined up. I, I would guess there must have been a couple hundred tile laying there. I think eight of them had red marks on them where they inspect each one, mark them if there's a little chip at all. They, and then they patch them. So everyone either had a green mark on it or, or red paint on it. And I think I counted eight of them. They'd have been chipped, that's all.
Were they empty down low or just standing?
I, you know, there's no in there to ask at the time, so I couldn't ask them that. But, I mean, we're talking a little chip about this long in the tongue. And, I mean, it was, it was minor.
And like I told Rick, you know, sometimes even loading those, there could have been a little bit of flake off to them.
These, even if they didn't patch them, I don't think they were going to leak. Because it was, there's nothing very severe. But it's good to see that they are monitoring it real close, and they got their rock stationed out. And they got their tile where they're going to tap into, they got the cement, cemented to it. It's just a good project going out there. They're doing a great job, I think. And then I took a tour of the power line company out here, and I let them look at each driveway and took notes on each one out there in the county. So I'm sure Paul's going to talk about that today, so have a little background on that. That's all I done.
Okay. Let's see, the twenty-ninth, I had a meeting over in Cherokee's Citizens Advisory Board on the mental health. We find the avenue, he calls himself the superintendent, but it's the director. He has ten years' experience in Kansas, in Kansas City is where he was located. Five hundred bed operation there. And he's mainly was in charge as a sexual predator part of it. Let's see. Right now we're down five R.I.'s in the, in ours over here. Have retired or left. And they have eighteen working, but they still down five. And he says every weekend, on weekends, they get a call for an adult bed. They average eighteen calls a weekend just to get a bed to get in from all over the state, you know. So when one gets transferred out, they can get one in, but otherwise, I guess that was about all I had. They had a few transfers in from the corinda, when they closed corinda.
Oh, sure.
I guess that was about all I had.
Very good. Peggy, on Thursday and Friday, I spent up at Spencer with the, with the supervisor executive board. We had people from each of the various districts. We had people from Clay County, Humboldt County, Sioux County, Jefferson, Carroll, Worth, Otiola, Mill, Mahaaska, and going on. They had each district president plus the ISAC staff, which was Lucas and Bill and Jamie, Kelsey and Rachel, and Bill Hickmire, our legislature. And we basically, what we did, we go through and plan the agendas for our next upcoming meetings and what's going on. The first one will be in Cedar Rapids, November twentieth. And we put together a dinner there. And we had affiliate time outside of that whole ISAC meeting and get together what we wanted to do. There, we got some topics, talk about legislative updates, runoff water, secondary roads, mental health, courthouse security, just to name a few. And then we got into a couple of other meetings coming up. We'll end up planning those more on depth. ISAC University on the twentieth of January. And there we hope to have Grassley, maybe as a speaker, maybe John Ehrich, maybe the president of Iowa State, talk about economic development, those kinds of things. We got a guy from Hawaii, maybe on trade mission, and spoke at Naco once before on economic development. Those are the kind of things that's in the middle, just to see what happens. Then we got into a big discussion about mental health. And that's where I think we've, getting close to that, I don't know what's going on. You know, we kind of react rather than, or reacting rather than proactive. We got to talk about gas tax. You know, we got organized there. We have P.R. board. We got that pulled off. Mental health, we just react to whatever legislators want to tell us. They don't know what's going on. I don't know what's going on. We probably did, provided, most supervisors in the state of Iowa don't have a foggy side of about mental health. We kind of come to the conclusion that maybe we need to have some kind of a committee, board of supervisors, some of the providers, maybe DHS and some of the administrators like Bob Lincoln. Little, little small committee and get together. And we had some questions here we thought we ought to answer. We'll see what you think. Does, does the citizens really need an aisle? What's an effective way to provide these services? Are these services being provided? Are there gaps? What's, what's it going to cost? Who's responsible for these services? What's the best way to provide it? Who's responsible for paying the bill? That's, that's all we hear right now. All they talk about is how much it's going to cost. And they kind of delegated that to the regions, but they haven't told the regions how they're going to pay for it. They don't give any guidelines, just slobbering out there. As we talk more about it, that's what we came to the conclusion. Maybe I'm overreacting, I don't know. But maybe what we need to do is get a committee together. And I don't think we ought to have this large committee, but maybe we get somebody from each region. A couple legislators, a couple legislators, Regan, Regan, Megan, Megan Regan. Another guy maybe has an idea of what's going on. We get something put together, get some answers to these questions. Get a proposal out there, so we go to a legislator and say, here's what we need. And get some P.R. going, and see if we can get it instead of just arguing about what, so it'd be thirty-five dollars a head or twenty, forty-one, or whatever it is. You know, I think probably...
Carl, here's what I would think on that idea, and I just kind of mentioned it earlier, earlier this morning. But the best way to make something like that work might be to have each one of the regional directors, like Bob Lincoln, all those other guys, kind of be that committee. And maybe have him have a part of their monthly meeting where, you know, our supervisors talk to them about the concerns we have or what we'd like to address. And then let those regional directors go and have this meeting and then present their ideas. Because on a sheer level of understanding of what's going on, the supervisors won't be able to... I, I go to those meetings and I fully, you know, gay, I'm fully trying to follow what's going on. But you need those directors because they know the connections, they know what's, you know, who they got to see and work with. But I think, you know, we need to support them with ideas, but I think those regional directors would have to be the ones that work. Because if they aren't, if you're not unified in this group, a small group out of a certain region won't be enough to hold. But if all the regional directors were part of that, were willing to sign on, they, you know, they would be speaking for what's, who's doing the plan, who's doing the work, you know.
We get lost in the acronyms alone.
I mean, it's overwhelming.
Then the other thing you have to worry about, we found a great disparity between southeast Iowa and north central Iowa.
Sure.
Something different.
Oh, yeah.
Sure, right on the north.
So we're trying to get those all nice and equal services. And see, now like next, this next month's meeting, we will know who the MCOs are, which is the medical health care organizations. But we're not sure how that, you know, what they're going to take care of. And Palmer's, Director Palmer's going to be there at our meeting, so that'll be interesting. But this is such a large scale issue, it would take those kind of people with expertise to actually present a really full of ideas, I think.
Maybe this is wrong, but we came to the conclusion DHS's main thrust right now is figure out some way to transfer the cost of this to the locals and not give us any guidance how to deliver. That's roughly what we, maybe that's wrong, but...
Well, that's the sense of feeling you get because when you're being told, you know, to do this, do this, but we'll figure out how to fund it later. And that's kind of the scary part.
We have these regional directors plus some people like Kathy, maybe a couple legislators. And, you know, I don't think we have a foggy side of what's going on, do you?
We have those questions. We can, we can ask those questions, but to answer those questions or to find out what direction, you know, the whole, every one of those regions has to be on board to make something work, probably.
I told, getting out of...
I mean, it'd take a lot of commitment to do it.
Each one of those guys are going back and try their board on the side.
That's what I...
Maybe you'll organize something like this based on what we all find out. That's kind of interesting to me. And then after we got through all the playing up there, Friday night, we drove over to what the boat did. Got the rig on the boat and went to a shrimp shed where they raise shrimp in a boat. They make the whole hog house that they clean up. They got tanks in there raising shrimp.
I've heard about those.
And they get these things in there, sixteen thousand little pieces that looks like flour. A year and a half later, they're ready to sell. Sixteen dollars a pound.
Wow.
Kind of here, he said more money than that was in raising hogs.
I suppose.
So that was, like I said, my weekend. Anything, Peggy? And then you want to relate to us?
I think, is this scary?
We've got Eric ready for the, okay. Want to back up, Jenna?
I have a, Gary lost us, but came in and was interested in purchasing three county held tax certificates in Redwick. They've ordered his property. I didn't totally read that, but one parcel has a hundred and twenty-eight dollars owing on the certificate. The other one has two hundred. And the third one has five hundred and twelve dollars. And then there'd be current year taxes he'd probably want to pick up just to keep the parcel from going back to tax sale. We visited about the amount and everything last week. And then there's the ten dollar assignment fee for each certificate. But these are old enough certificates from two thousand and five. And he could, I suggested he get with his lawyer and he could start his ninety day ride of redemption immediately.
Oh, that's right.
He can own them in a short period of time. Do you want to say anything more about those lands, Gary, and what your intentions are for it?
I know the tax is, they're verbant against it, exceeds the value of the property.
Right.
But I guess, I just want to make sure it's going to stay the way it is, is what I'm after. It's right now two, the total house down now, it's two empty lots. Most plans I have for it probably is to put a garden on it, a part of it. I thought maybe if we get a little forgiveness on some of the money going on, it'd be nice, but I guess we'll go with your guys' decision.
So these are, these are behind your house, Gary?
Yeah, right across the alley from me. I own, actually I own...
Well, they're across the, yeah, they are across the alley.
Yeah, across the alley, behind my house.
Okay, because I know where the property, the, the house, this isn't the house, these are empty lots.
These are empty lots. I bought, purchased a house from, from the same...
The one that's to the east of you, right?
East of, I don't know, Denny Arms.
Yes.
I bought the place east of him and I'm going to tear that down.
Okay.
Clean that all up. We've got one of the garages down there.
Also, these are, these are on the northern town. These aren't the ones...
Northern.
I was thinking the one on the south part over there. No, okay, I know where you're at. Because I thought I seen somebody cleaning up around that garage this weekend. I farm and live up in the Hardy area, so I thought somebody was working on it. I didn't know it's something changing.
Me and my wife.
Okay. So where do you live? Which house do you...
I live by, from, I live in the gray house on the corner.
Oh, the gray one?
The house with the two car...
Okay, okay, okay.
Big garden.
Okay.
That's our place there, so.
Well, these have been let go for quite a, I mean, they've been given...
They've been...
They've been, I mean, run, not only live, but run down as far as maintenance and stuff on it. So what are you going to tear down out of that, then?
Well, the house, the property I bought, I'm going to tear that house down.
Okay.
East of, it'd be west of Denny Arms, the place right next to us.
Oh, okay, just west of...
Save the two car garage, because that's a nice building.
Yeah.
And we're just going to...
Get rid of that house, which is really bad, that's in bad shape. The city was trying to work on that earlier in the year.
Yeah, they were, they were technically got it, so.
I bet they were.
We'll get it cleaned up in the next year. I hope to have it all down, cleaned up and looking good again, so.
Well, the city will be happy, too. Everybody will be happy, yeah.
So anyway, I was interested in those two lots, the other side of Denny, so we can clear, I think we do.
You know, there's so many lots there, I guess.
Are those regular sized lots, oversized lots?
Uh, two fifty foot lots, I think.
The smaller ones on the...
So we have two discussions at hand. One of the taxes and one on the penalties, right?
Yes. The assignment of the certificate and then the penalties or taxes, however you want to work with that.
What do you think? We ought to, any opinion here, somebody?
Do what we do typically.
I think, yeah.
Just collect the taxes and forgive the penalties.
And forgive the interest.
That's been pretty typical, what we've done.
Yes, because it's nice if these properties cleaned up.
How about, he's willing to bring the taxes current down, and there's about another four hundred and ninety-seven dollars of interest and penalties on the current. So the taxes that are on the certificate from two thousand and five, or is that going to...
Oh, there's additional interest on the...
There's about eleven hundred...
What's the total? Yeah, give us the total of the interest, that or eleven hundred something?
The interest alone of the certificates and the taxes after the certificates is nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars. The total of everything, if I add this right, is like eighteen hundred and eighty-six dollars and twenty-four cents. And you're looking at, you know, half of that is penalty.
Yeah, it is.
Ninety dollars in penalty.
Well, I'm more than willing to forgive the interest on, you know, and the penalties on it. Because that's, that's our procedure, how we do this.
Especially when you've got someone that's going to take care of it.
Yeah.
They'll pay taxes every year, right?
Oh.
Well, it's well worth coming and get half of this cut off, because that, I mean, it just helps the process a little bit.
I appreciate that.
And we're more than willing to do that part, so. Rick, you want to make a motion?
I thought you just did.
No, I didn't really make it. Okay, is the total about nine hundred and thirty-eight?
Of the penalty.
Okay, I will make the motion to forgive the nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars of penalty.
And the assignment of the...
And the signature certificates to Gary.
I'll second that motion.
You have a motion to second to forgive nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars worth of penalty. And then pay the taxes and sign them for two. Other discussion?
When you see these sheets, you're, I mean, you think, oh my God, it went on forever. From two thousand and five, that's ten years already.
Be good to get that back from the tax roll. Plus get it cleaned up.
Yep.
Okay, any other discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion nay. Motion carried.
Thank you.
That's good, you're taking it over.
All right.
Boy, that stuff adds up, right?
Well, you know, you let, you let it roll over and roll over and all.
Yeah. I think we're ready to go to drains.
I think so, yeah.
I'll make a motion to...
I'll make a motion to go into drains.
I'll second it.
All in favor of going to drains, say aye.
Aye.
Motion nay. Motion carried. We love the drains. And more for me.
I have properties in one day, that's good.
I don't think Rick's here today.
No, this, this is just discussion on this.
Couple of estimates and...
It's amazing how two little lots out there just keep stopping.
Well, it's absolutely amazing. Thing is, if you just chuck your mail in the circular file and don't do anything about it, that's what happens.
But the other thing is amazing, you see there are so many properties that keep coming up. I mean, there's a lot of blue properties out there like this that are always on, tax collection.
Paper when the taxes are due.
He said that, she said that last time, they had that fox and thim, when they came up, the ones that were not current. There was all forty people in the rest of the building.
Really?
It's a bit of sight unseen, and I don't know why they do it, because most of them never get reclaimed.
Would you like to introduce yourself here from the radio, right?
Oh, yeah, we've been waiting for that.
Sorry, guys, you guys are always just so busy.
Oh, no, we're not.
I'm Randy Donaldson, I'm the news director per page, V.P.
Okay.
So, you know, I've just kind of popped in to get what I need from you guys.
Donaldson?
Donaldson.
Only in Colorado, right? They tell the joke on there when you came to Iowa.
Oh.
You've got to stop three times in Colorado plate. They tell you to bring marijuana in.
So actually, it was kind of funny because I've been here for almost three months now, and I still have my Colorado plates. And I actually had to go down to the police station and be like, look, guys, I don't have any pot, I promise.
No kidding.
I promise. And they're like, well, are you planning on staying here in Iowa? And I'm like, I'm not sure yet. That's why I haven't gotten my tags changed. And then so I got pulled over that same day about an hour later. So I went and talked to Sheriff Priver, and I was like, please, please, don't pull me over. And he's like, well, are you speeding or something? And I'm like, no. No, I had, I had three officers the past week pull me over and ask me, can you search your vehicle? And then finally, the third time they searched my vehicle, this was probably like a month and a half into being here. They asked me if they could search my vehicle, and I was like, sure, go get a warrant. And they were like, what? Why do we need to do that? And I was like, because you guys keep pulling me over, and it's the same thing. I know my rights. Go get a warrant if you really want to search my car. And they were like, oh, we'll just go.
Yeah.
Long as we don't have...
Thanks.
All right.
Oh, don't worry. But yeah, thanks for tolerating me kind of coming in and out, you know, when you got people like that. I just run out there to see if I can't get a little...
Yeah.
Let it happen.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're drains right now, and we got DD one twenty-five, who pays us any for...
Hmm, go back up.
Back, we got a point.
You're way ahead of yourself.
He jumped one.
DD eighteen.
Okay, we've got a point engineer to evaluate the bulkhead.
Yeah, I think Jerry and I have both been out there and looked at it. It needs to be repaired. It's in bad shape. There's water going under it instead of out of the pipes. So obviously the pipes are rusted off back in behind. It's, and it's going to do damage to our road here shortly because it's starting to wash there.
There's probably some collapsed pipes falling, or it's really a mess.
It's, it needs to be fixed.
What's the, we haven't been out there, where's that located, DD?
Well, just straight north of Hardy, in the block, top of a mile, mile and a half, I guess, maybe about two miles, I guess, mile and a half.
Yeah.
And...
East side of the road.
Right where the dredge ditch starts, and it's on the east side of the road. But, you know, I find right next to them, what I've, over the years, what they've tried to do, and Rick probably seen it, too, is probably keep refilling the backside with rock and...
And it's...
And it keeps washing out.
Steel and wire and all kinds of rocks in there.
And it's, it's kind of like this, and it's very, it's very near to want to collapse. I mean, it's just about ready to collapse in, so it's not functional at all.
No, it needs to be rebuilt, replaced.
And I, and the main reason we wouldn't just say go out and repair it or something, we don't want, we can't repair this. And we want to find out if we can go and eliminate them all.
Eliminate, maybe put a rip wrap.
That's what we've heard other engineers talk about being able to do. So we want an engineer's quick report on what we need to do. We're figuring, I'm, I'm really estimating, that thing shouldn't be over fifty thousand, so we shouldn't have big bills on it.
No, I think it'll be...
That being said, you know, even though we're going to get quotes, I'd like to have him at least look it over and say, how much, um, rip wrap material?
Yeah, we need to have a design on it.
And you want to look this over.
Some of the pipes go under the road there.
Coming from all directions.
Yeah, there's, it looked like there's at least three, maybe four different pipes coming into this bulkhead. And some of them are running, some aren't running, so...
They're running under.
So the backside, underneath of it, it's a mess. So I'd like to appoint INS group out of, I think the main office is Mankato, but I think this guy will come out. He'll go in to take a look at it, give us an estimate.
I'll second that.
On what to do with this bulkhead.
I'll second that motion.
Yeah, motion, Rick, ready to second, but Jerry... Motion, Rick, second by Jerry, to contact INS, appoint him to do a study on this bulkhead. Other discussion?
And possibly dip the road ditch, whether that needs to be done to bring it back to original grade.
Oh, that's a good point, too.
Yeah, I kind of want that looked at also, 'cause there's some intakes.
Do that all the same review?
Yes, yeah, 'cause there's some intakes in the ditch, where the local farmers say the, the road ditch is holding up the water from getting to the, to the bulkhead, actually where the water was designed to run over the bulkhead, so.
Probably long overdue.
Well, if we're gonna do this, do anything, we're gonna make sure we get it right, 'cause it does have to come out, it's, there's no saving it anymore.
Okay, other discussion?
And Bush, Shapul, I believe, has put in a request, start this process, okay, all right. Thank you.
All of them favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay, motion carried. I assume you'll make the contact, Trish?
Mm-hmm.
You have a go on? All right.
Yes, sir.
Nine fifteen edition here, it says DD one twenty-five, approved estimate, C-Tex Concrete Products, estimate number three.
C-Tex, yeah.
What's the amount of that, we got?
They want money?
Yeah, I don't have any.
Yeah, I don't have any.
The amount is a hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars.
Has this product all been delivered?
Yes, it has.
Hundred, hundred and how much?
A hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars. And there were some broken pipes there, probably two or three, um, they've been removed.
Yeah, 'cause I didn't see any, well, there were three pipes sitting out in the bean field that weren't with the rest, maybe that, maybe those were the ones that were broken, 'cause they were.
Looked at.
Okay.
'Cause they're, that is taken care of.
So, this has not been buried yet, right? So, have we started using it?
Oh, yeah, they've gotten a mile.
Yeah, this is, some of this is in the ground. Well, yeah, they're due payment, there's no problem paying them on this.
It looked to me like, I don't know, this is their first junction box they're putting in to pick up a sinkwell?
Yep.
It was huge, that junction box.
By twenty-two, I believe.
Yeah.
And that should go in today.
How deep you think that is, isn't that, how deep, is the whole depth for it yet, Rick, how deep you think?
Oh, it's twenty-seven VD, that one twenty-two.
It's down in there.
Did they, uh, get pre-tax paid from the rest?
Yeah, we got that other switch.
We're paying them directly.
No, but we did get, pre-tax did get settled on the one out here. We just, I signed off on that last week, I think, for Trish.
Handwritten, yeah.
Handwritten, so they could get paid, so this will be addition to that on different projects.
Yeah, these, uh, junction boxes are kind of neat, I mean, big enough I could almost stand in it.
Mm-hmm. Okay, we have.
Make that motion, yeah, get approved, pay estimate number three.
We hear a second.
I'll second.
We have a motion to second to pay concrete products, pay estimate number three for products we have received, other discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay, motion carried. Now, we're down to pay estimate number three for Denver Underground. This is for work complete, I assume?
Yes, sir.
And Jerry, or Rick, you say you was out there and observed what they were doing?
Yes, yeah.
Looked good?
Yeah, looks.
Just as good as the first time you were up there?
Yeah, they're still doing a good job.
They are in sand right now, sand pockets, so it's loaded up.
That's easier than.
They were supposed to install that junction box last Friday.
They got spun sand.
Yeah.
What's the amount of the request?
Yeah.
Amount of the request, well.
Hundred and fifty-two thousand?
Yep, hundred and fifty-two thousand, one hundred dollars and ninety cents.
And ninety cents. They're running just a little higher than the material at this point, I'm wondering about seeing, I'll make a motion to approve a hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred and ninety dollars to Denver Underground. Yeah, the deepness of it, it's gonna be more.
We hear a second.
Second.
Second. All those favor paying Denver Underground, a hundred and fifty-two thousand, one hundred, one hundred and fifty-two, one hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Kind of kind of tongue twisted here this morning.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else in drains we need to talk about while we're in drains? Anything going?
No, Rick is going to be here this afternoon, uh, Warner shortly there.
When he comes up, would you ask him when he's coming on a meeting with the committee on Gilmore City? I want to date, I'd like to know they're gonna do it this week, but I don't know, pretty soon these guys are gonna get busy with it.
Yeah.
See if he gets something, if he's gonna get something said.
Do we have inspectors going on out there with Denver Underground, or is Rick talking a lot of what's going on?
I believe.
Just came in now, Derek is out there.
Under Guy, yeah.
Um, I had the text from him, just letting me know that the junction box was today, and if I wanted to come out and look, which I do.
Good.
Um, there's been somebody out there most of the time.
Good.
I get pictures and stations.
Well, Monday or Tuesday, I told Carl earlier that Rick got, uh, as of, built as of mapping of the city Gilmore Drive.
Mm-hmm.
So, he said he would, he'd make copies, he's gonna give Gilmore City people, you know, the town, so they have their copies to take care of, and then he's gonna meet with the board, but I want him to get started with Pat and, uh, Brett as quickly as he can, 'cause we just, you know. So, we're gonna look into this, and that was what, like, over thirty days ago, I'm sure.
Two months ago.
I'm thinking it's a little longer, yeah.
'Cause, you know, when we had that meeting at Gilmore City, there was a lot of confusion as to which way water went, some said that there was a line put in here, and some said it was a twelve, some said it was twenty-four. Nobody seemed, but, so the as-bills are.
Critical.
Documentation of what they actually put in the ground after the project was done, you know, it's not that, like, the estimate, it's how the project was done, is what the as-bills are. So, you actually know what they put in, where it went.
Unfortunately, they found them, 'cause they were having trouble finding them, the city didn't seem to have a copy of it, so it was getting harder.
Rather than going by hearsay.
The original engineer, we found them.
He said he did.
He said he did, Monday or Tuesday, he'd gotten word, and he was making copies, so try and pin down to when they're gonna meet, so we can start knowing where.
Yeah, 'cause they've not once already.
Yeah, right, right, and that's when Brett requests, requests for the discussion, okay.
Um, what else do I have? C-Tech, Rick. Brandon Myers still doing the cleanup on six over in Norwell, he's actually in Beaver right now, and he found a really large washout, I mean, it was really large. And then he was crawling along and kind of sinking on another one along the.
On the ditch back?
Yeah.
So, he's gonna work on those?
Well, I wanna have Jacobson's look at that.
Okay.
It's on the, I think Jason is looking at the cleanout part anyway, so.
Okay, that's fine, yeah, that's good.
Um.
And when that got done with the last, the fever, and.
Yes.
On the Olson property, and that was a huge mess, so.
And I think I'm gonna have Rick help me today with an explanation.
You know what, I told him that too, and I called him on the phone, I said, help Trish figure out, write a letter of some kind that would explain the fever why this is gonna run more than what it was. I did, he said he would do that, so, yeah, take advantage of it. Well, he's gonna need to describe what, you know, the underflow, there was too much overflow water for that wound where it was, um, it needed a bigger tube, 'cause we put a bigger tube in there. And then some of that washout, you know, is not what we had anticipated, but Rick will be able to write something up for that, I'm sure, so. All right.
And, I don't know, hopefully assessments will go up this week. Let me.
Anything about last week?
No.
No, okay.
When will we, when will we hear if there is from, uh, that Mike Boil, if there's money being allocated for more drainage, close, or well closures? Do we have any idea on that?
There's a good spot, but.
I thought you said there was.
Well, it got approved, that, that letter in there said it was approved, so, just got approved, it was like four point six million dollars for ag well closures. So, I think, uh, we're gonna be okay on that. I'm sure he'll be contacting you sometime on that.
He'll give about a million for closing the well, so.
You know, we've talked about the drains right now, kind of relates back to reporting ideas earlier, trying to figure out what topics to have with high sack.
Mm-hmm.
We found that about half the people can care less, some kind of building had drains.
No.
Yeah, they don't care if there's some container.
And they start talking about something else, it's hard to come up with something that's gonna be.
The best way for the drains stuff is to have it at our drain, Iowa District Grange meeting, where everybody's, I mean, that's a good place to have a high profile speaker or whatever.
Lots of people in the air.
Yeah.
That's what I would like to see IDDA some more.
We'll talk to one of the board members, if you know one.
More, more, less, less, um, what do you, plugging for the companies and more.
Okay, I'll bring that up next week, September.
Crucial legal good stuff.
I think the companies who funded, they funded.
You got to do both, you got to do both. When they say give them ten minutes, make sure they just take ten minutes, so.
But there's so much going on legally and.
Yeah, there's a lot of talk.
I'll bring that up and bring you.
Anybody else for Trish? Anybody else in drains? I entertain a motion to go out of drains.
I'll move it.
Go ahead, I can. Motion by Rick, second by Mort, all those favor going out of drains, say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay, we're back to general session. Goodbye, Trish.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Keep up the good work.
Yeah.
Get those lobbies out. Once I thought she said she didn't, but I don't know if that was for.
This is a pretty short meeting, good one to come.
Today, yeah.
Looks good, 'cause I have like ten interviews today.
Mm.
Oh, wow.
That's a, that's a big schedule.
Lot's going on this week.
I guess.
Welcome back, Peggy.
Thank you.
We're back to the demonstration, you got anything for us?
No, not at all.
Chuck, we're all gonna come for training on, what, the twelfth?
The twelfth, well, nine AM.
At five.
Yeah. Thought they don't know about more yet, but I got everybody else down, well, down in the magistrate's room.
Is that where it'll be? Nine o'clock.
Next Friday, we're gonna be deprived.
Yeah.
At noon, right down here in the parking lot.
Yeah.
That's when they're hungry.
I'll come and talk to you and help you.
Yeah, I think, um.
On the twelfth. Well, we're gonna, Rick and I are probably trying to get the charcoal and the fluid, and I think whatever's left over from Paul's, we'll bring it, I'm sure. Yeah, we'll get that, or maybe Paul will bring, have Paul bring it around if there's, they can tie it down.
Nine in the morning till eleven thirty.
Can you get it to you?
I mean, as far as everything else, I'll just go to February, Harvey, and.
With all of them, you want to be here a little after eleven, 'cause we'll have to start our own coals, and Paul's planning on starting out first, about eleven thirty this week out there, probably good enough for him, so. You're not a picture.
Yeah, I'll bring it.
We'll, um, let Paul bring that grill down there and set it the way he wants.
Sounds like we have two cheap chefs here.
Yeah.
Barnyard.
And you're gonna get all the, you'll have.
Yes, I'll get the stuff.
Okay.
And Trish is like, you enjoy the time?
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
Do some, do some again, yeah. Um, I did some checking through my stack of things that are still pending, and I haven't heard back from the company we asked for the, the Jansen for the water proofing on the outside. They did an inspection, he was supposed to send something back to me.
So, he's been here and looked at it.
So, I'll try and contact him this week and just ask him what's going on. Um, it also brought up to mind then that we're gonna add some additional panic buttons throughout the courthouse, and I haven't heard back from Fort Dodge, the gentleman uses modern sound, um, the cost on that, and when they might be coming to do that. Um, they kind of give us, give us an estimate at budget time, certainly time they could come and do that at any point.
Okay.
So, other than that, the grounds are in pretty good shape, things look good outside, Dave keeps things really trimmed up nice, and.
I'm gonna ask you a question about the, the lighting, remember we talked about that, this company, what was the name of the company that was gonna come and do that?
Um, let's see, I don't have the gentleman's name right offhand.
Okay.
But we're gonna have Dave Edson come first, 'cause there were several, uh.
Fixtures.
Light fixtures that needed to have new balance.
Okay, that's what it was, yeah.
So, once he gets that, I'll call the other guy, and say we're ready for you.
So, I know Paul is talking to me, he's been approached by, uh, Mid-American to get the light bolt, lights changed out there, at, basically at no cost, the rebate pretty much covers it.
Yeah.
Really?